Do we want a motion to enter public session?
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, was that Bill and John?
Yeah, second.
All right, thank you. Roll call, Mr. Manans?
Here.
Mr. Nevins?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Diefenberger?
Here.
Okay, and we'll wait on Mrs. Chaskula.
And Jean, would you just record what time she joins us for the record?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everybody. Happy New Year to everybody who could join us. Courtney's going to join us in a couple of minutes. She's getting another computer. We'll go, we'll start with comments from the public on an agenda items. Just a reminder for those members of the public in attendance, this is one of two opportunities afforded members of the public to comment on or inquire about agenda items. Members of the public also have the opportunity at the end of the evening's agenda to ask questions or voice concerns or comments on matters not formally noted on the agenda. And we do appreciate everybody's cooperation. I don't have access to the chat. You do, right? I have the email. The email is boe@manans, oh, sorry, boecomments@manans.org. Once again, boecomments@manans.org if you have a comment. You're on mute, Dr. Long.
There are none there right now, Jeff, but we'll give it a moment to see if anything pops up.
Yeah, we'll see if something refreshes. Nothing in the email right now. All right, Courtney's texting me to say she's going to call in.
Okay.
She has the number from the email instructions, correct?
She should, yes.
Yep, got it.
Do we want to wait for her to get on to continue then?
Yeah, we'll give it 30 seconds. And if we comment at that point or question, we'll take that as well.
We haven't done this remote thing in a while, so.
Yeah. Once again, the email address is boecomments@manans.org if you have a question or a comment. Thing is, when she calls in, will she be elevated to someone or will she just show up in the attendees and we'll have to elevate her?
Yeah, but it looks like she may have just called in and I cannot make her a panelist from the call in. She's got to call into the maybe, Jeff, the best bet would have her be call your phone and put her on speaker.
Okay.
I'm not able to elevate a call in user to a panelist.
Hi, Courtney. I was just, I was just texting you to call my cellphone so I could put you on speaker.
I could hear you. I think you guys couldn't hear me.
What I'm gonna do, make it easier, I'm gonna plug you into my, one of these two, Ms. Dr. Long. Into my speaker. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Yep.
I had a problem with everyone. I couldn't get the WebEx to work on my computer for some reason. My software engineer wasn't figuring it out either, so I feel a little less, hopefully.
We got you. You hear me okay? And you can hear everybody else okay?
Yep.
All right. We'll do this.
All right, and Jeff, there's still no comments, so I think we can go ahead and move on once you're situated.
Okay. I'm glad my phone is charged. Okay, there we go. We're good. So we will move along since there were no comments to the approval of the minutes. This is where we are. Courtney, you have number six. Are there any questions relative to our last meeting, new minutes?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, so can I get a resolution, please? And that will start with Courtney.
It is resolved that the Board of Education, the Manans Union Free School District accept the minutes of the December 14, 2020 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What? Was that too late? We're off to a great start, aren't we, folks? I just heard a bit. Are there any objections? I didn't see, I didn't hear any. I just heard a blip at the end that sounded like a yes, so I'll assume that unless someone speaks up. The resolution passes for the approval of the minutes. Move along to communication to the Board of Education. Manans School Yearbook Club. The correspondents for that.
I'm I can do the duties.
Okay, so if Board members could get $20 to Jen Wilson, either in person or mail, I guess.
I can send my Venmo over our text.
Okay. All right. I'm down with Venmo.
If not, you know where I live.
They'll drop off cash, I'm sure. I'll have to coordinate with the yearbook exactly how we're going to pull off the picture this year, but we'll figure it out.
Screenshot.
All right, well, thanks for doing that, Jeff.
We could always use last years where nothing's changed.
Oh, true. Hopefully, we have a different type of graduation. Okay, so we'll move along to business matters. There's a few discussion items we have. We have our Claims Adjuster, Michael Wolf, here for a presentation. We have a follow-up on the Board of Education retreat, and we have the curriculum report for the Middle School Social Studies and English Language Arts. And we'll start with, with, with Michael Wolf, our Claims Auditor.
Thank you.
And Mike, you are with us. Go ahead. If you want to turn on your video and unmute yourself, I saw Mike and now I don't see Mike.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can't see you. And just for Board members, there was information in your packets. There was a memo from Mike and then an accompanying sheet. And there was an updated spreadsheet sent a little bit earlier to the start of the meeting with one slight change. Mike, it's
Everyone. I, as you may have seen me in previous years' meetings, I've been your Claims Auditor for, since 2014. And just to make you aware, I'm the Claims Auditor as well as at Cap Region BOSI's and four or five other schools. So this is something I see regularly. I see expenses related to school districts on a consistent basis. One of the things I handed out to in your packet was a thing called the role and responsibilities of the Claims Auditor. And part of that is just to explain what I do, the reasons why I do it, the laws behind it. In general, as you know, you have the fiduciary duties of supervising the taxpayer dollars. Since you guys aren't there on the day-to-day operations, you delegated that to your purchasing agent, your treasurer. On the payroll side of things, whoever certifies payroll is seeing all the expenses related to payroll. And then everything left over is accounts payable. And that's why I come and I review all the items for accounts payable. One of the things about the role is I am doing the work of the Board and I take that role very seriously. So part of the tests that we go through, come in every week, I review the expenses. I'm looking to see, has it complied with the Board's policy for purchasing? Has there been a PO put in place? I look to also see that everything there is valid. One of the litmus tests is, is it a reasonable and necessary expense for the school district to be making? So I evaluate all of those items and with, with the little expenses that have been spent and going lately, there isn't thing, anything that's really been questionable. You know, it's bare minimums right now just to survive. The expenses that I look at, I'm looking to see the vouchers are there. Everything is correct. Everything's been signed off and approved. If it needed to go to state contractor. Done. Also make sure there's no sales tax. Anything related to travel and expenses such as meals, look to see that the mileage reimbursement's been placed in there and the it's been approved as a, as a valid training as part of your process. And then I just will sign off on any of the items. If there's anything that comes into question, I'll usually talk to Kathy or Jean. Sometimes there are clerical items that are corrected, but other than that, if there's an expense that I find is questionable or shouldn't be paid, I'll usually talk to Jean and we will hold the payment or just flat out reject the payment. One of the things you'll see here is a new report. This is a report that I used to do a long time ago. And, you know, Kathy and I have been discussing it and it said that we really should be giving it to the Board on top of the checklist that you get. I realize you get the you can see what the individual vendors are being paid, but for anybody who's not there to see that, there's this report this summer. I can give a general line on a large scale, dollar-wise, that are reviewed each month. As you can see, the, the number on it is just the number, the warrant number that corresponds to the warrant that I've reviewed, the date of the warrant. Under fund, you're going to see capital fund and multi-fund. The multi-fund is actually your general fund, your federal fund, your cafeteria fund, all combined together into that one checking account fund. Further break it down and just the type of warrant that it is, and you can see in this month's, we had the retirees' Medicare reimbursement, the retiree buyout, capital project, and then the general AP is just general expenses that are coming out of your cafeteria, federal or general fund. Those are your, your primary expenses. Number of checks, you can see the check sequence in there. One of the things with that is to see that the numbers are going to American order. Now, one of the things you'll notice is that the warrant numbers break between 28 and 31 and the check numbers break. Reason for that being is the warrant number 29 and 30 were related to payroll. So that's why you see, you're going to see breaks in the numbers sometimes. One of the things I will do is I'll talk to Jean and make sure that I'm not missing a warrant and that if there is a missing number or missing a check, I will verify that it was a payroll-related check and can verify that as well. The date of my review, the amount of the warrant, so you can see how many monies are being spent in the one that had zeros in it, that's just EFTs or any electronic transfers or wire transfers. If there's any of those types of items that I review, those will be documented as well. Anything that's of a comment or adjustment that I make, I will note them in this report. Then if there's any findings as internal control, if I have any findings, I would indicate that there, there was one or two there and there would actually be a second page to this report that would describe in detail the finding. In general, you know, in my years of working with Manans, the, there haven't been any major findings. You know, the minor findings are what I see at most of my schools where sometimes some things needed to be purchased and they can't get a purchase order right away and they end up buying it before a purchase order's in place. But other than that, you know, very clean. There's, there's not a lot of spending to be done in Manans anyway, so it's been pretty cut and dry. Any questions? As I said, I report to you guys. If there's any questions, you can contact me at any time as well.
Thank you for the information, right? And the reports come through and it's easy to understand. I had a question though regarding, is there any audit planned or findings on the building project money that was spent in the leftover account that still exists? Is that something you do or is that something we should go outside and have audited?
Any of the order for the capital project, the, the aspect that I look at is the monies that are being paid and that the claims that have been presented. So I'm looking to see, for, for instance, with capital projects, I'm looking to see that the architect has signed off on it, the forms have been notarized, all the required architectural forms are there. And then most of those will also have to have a payroll to see that, to show that the prevailing wage has been being paid. Then I'll also look to see that it threatens previous bills. Any funds that are left over, though, I'm not seeing that. The, my, my role is strictly saying it's okay to write a check and pay a vendor.
And Bill, to follow up on that, Kathy's working with Weston Company on that right now. And we still haven't been finalized because we have one outstanding dented door that we're not payment until that's taken care of. So that will come in subsequent meetings, but that would be through Weston Company.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Nope, thank you.
The only other thing I'll add before Mike leaves us is following the discussion items, you see the warrants, they are listed a little bit differently than they have in the past. And that's to align exactly with this new report that we're, we're using. So it looks a little bit different. It's the same information, though.
Got it.
I realize I didn't put my email or phone number on the bottom of that report or I cut it off at the bottom and without the footer. I will add that to the report going forwards. This way, if there's a or something else that you have a question on, you can contact me at any time. You know, email, phone call, I'll respond. Usually I try to get back to you within a day.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay. Everyone stay healthy. Have a good night and take care.
Don't feel the need to stay on. You can sign off.
Yeah, I'm, I'm due there tomorrow at 8 o'clock in the morning, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna head out.
Jeff, you want to go ahead and move on to the follow-up on the BOE retreat?
Follow-up on the Board Retreat, yes. We have a next step scheduled with the person from CASDA this Friday to go through the agenda, right? The agenda for the next
When we met with NISP, the Board met in December, we really kind of identified our overarching goals that we want to work from as part of our long-range planning process. You'll see those a little bit later in the budget presentation. It's really CASDA that will help us take the next steps and take those goals and I provide some benchmarks with some measurable objectives and a long-range plan. So Jeff and I will have an initial conversation with them on Friday and we'll let the Board know after that what our schedule and our planned subsequent conversations will entail.
Any questions about that? All right, we will move along. We've got a couple curriculum reports from our Middle School Social Studies and English Language Arts folks. Are they there with us, correct? Yes.
Yep, let me give you an introduction while they are unmuting themselves and turning their cameras on. Lisa Ball, Tom Schweitzer, and Jen Knapp are going to join us, our English Language Arts Social Studies teacher and our principal. The Board may recall back in September, there was an inquiry from one of our meeting attendees to learn and know more about our social studies curriculum. And as a Board, you agree that would be a good thing to do. So we have folks joining us tonight. It's very difficult, especially at the middle school level, to talk about social studies and separate it from ELA because of the collaborative work that they and you'll hear more about that and why it works so well. But I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mrs. Knapp to make some introductions and to kind of set the stage. While I am doing my best to share my screen with the presentation they have prepared for you this evening. Go ahead, Jen.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having us join you this evening to talk a little bit about the curricular work that occurs in social studies and the supportive work that occurs in ELA and how that winds up unfolding and being presented to students. I have both teachers here with me this evening. Mr. Schweitzer has joined us. He is our Middle School Social Studies teacher. And Mrs. Ball, our Middle School ELA teacher, is on the call as well. Mr. Schweitzer is in his second year with us at Manans School. He came to us after working pretty extensively at BOSI's in the area of social studies and doing professional development. So, um, his background knowledge and knowledge base in the area of Middle School Social Studies is quite extensive. And without coincidence, Mrs. Ball comes to us with a very similar background. She worked at BOSI's for quite a while. I actually originally met her many years ago, back when I was doing the work around the Common Core standards. And she was rolling that work out to districts and then she wound up landing with us at Manans. So they are both with us this evening. They're going to share the work that they do in their classes and how it supports each other. So, Mr. Schweitzer, I'm going to turn it over to you. And if you have any questions, they'll be happy to answer them for you at the end.
Can I just confirm, everybody can see the presentation on the screen?
Yep.
All right, good evening. Thanks for having me with you tonight. I'm going to talk a little bit about the curriculum that guides us in social studies, six through eight. And then some of the activities in the classroom that I enjoy that we do to really align with that work. So essentially, really what six through eight looks like and really where I teach from is the social studies framework that was developed and this was implemented in 2013. And it's really this idea that's preparing students for college career and civic life. And instead of memorizing dates and dead people, it's really looking at through social studies, through inquiry and looking at historical questions and studying historical questions and doing that through using a lot of different sources, whether, a lot of that being primary sources along with secondary sources that kind of tell the story of the, the items that we're investigating. And so a lot of times I bring in historical questions, you know, we, the facts that we know about history are, you know, certain events have happened, but it's what lens you look through to interpret those events. And that's really where I get excited about teaching social studies. It's that idea of the different points of view and the different perspectives that history can be taught from. And I think by bringing in primary sources, and Miss Ball will talk a little bit more about some of the things, some of the resources she uses to augment the work we do in social studies. But that's what gets me excited to teach social studies, the idea that we can bring in a lot of different sources and bring in things that, you know, articles and diaries and maps and things like that to help support the story of social studies and the story of history. And one of the things, one of the big pushes with the new framework is really making connections and using social study skills to teach those facts in, in social studies and looking at social studies, again, like I said, through questions. And so a lot of that means, you know, bringing in left-out groups that typically maybe that weren't so focused on in traditional stor, history classes, you know, looking at women's suffrage, which is a big thing. We're looking at eighth grade, looking at how people of color have been see themselves in history and as well as Native Americans. So the content, I'm going to focus a little bit on the content. I talked a little bit about the skills. And that's where really ELA helps us teach, you know, the content is pretty specific in what we teach K through eight. Sixth grade really focuses on the Eastern Hemisphere. So we look at, starting in sixth grade, we started looking at cultures and what it means to be a, you know, what a person, you know, what the world is like in different parts of the world in the Eastern Hemisphere. And then we get into looking at ancient civilizations, the development of civilizations, how people went from being hunters and gatherers to actually developing civilizations and where they did that along the river valleys. And then we get into, we're talking now about some of the ancient empires, ancient civilizations like ancient China. And then we get into ancient Greece, ancient Rome. And we look at this obviously through a historical lens, but we also bring in a lot of archaeology, a lot of evidence of trying to put together the story of these things that happened so long ago. And then seventh and eighth grade is really a continuation of one another. Seventh grade, they're really from the beginning of US history with a focus, with a focus on New York State when possible. And it's, so it's a two-year course where students start with looking at how the first people got here, the theories of migration, how people got to North America, really ending up to, ending up with current events. And we look at how those events are tied together throughout seventh and eighth grade, whether that be geographically, whether that be historically, or whether that be through their culture. So some of the things, you know, some of the big shifts in social studies again have been looking at social studies skills and how students can try and investigate history more as a social science, not just as a specific, you know, events that happen and memorizing, you know, the certain people and presidents and things like that. While those are important to give you a base of what to understand, it's really interesting to investigate how those events are interpreted, right? And in the sixth grade, what we look at, we start the year at looking at, you know, how do we investigate the vast cultures that exist? And one of my favorite things we like to do is there's some really good resources around if the world were 100 people. And we break it down, looking at, you know, if there were 100 people, how many people would have internet service and how many people would have access to fresh water and how many people would, you know, be malnourished? So we look at that kind of as a general understanding to think about how the world's much different than maybe we think of it in living in the United States. And then a lot of time, and then really the focus of the course going forward is studying those cultures and then looking at how those belief systems that they developed focus or focus on and influence their world. So and then how those cultures come in contact with one another as, as the world develops through trade. So those are a lot of things. Sixth grade's really focused on looking at the ancient civilizations and eventually how they spread out and, and come in contact with one another. Seventh grade starts, again, we start the year talking a lot about the migration of how people got, the theories of migration, we investigate those. And then we look at, obviously, this not being a vacant piece of land, but really an area where Native Americans and different cultural groups of Native Americans existed. And we focus on that. One of the areas I like to bring in, because there's a lot of local connections, is, is the Iroquois and Haudenosaunee. And this year, we had the opportunity to have someone in from the Iroquois Indian Museum and present and talk a little bit about their culture and how their culture compares to, you know, the, the, the people that live in or the culture that we kind of know as being Americans. So, and how they're their own really independent nation. And then we look also at, you know, we start to talk about how people start to come to the United States and we look at, one of the big area we focus on is this Middle Passage and what it was, what the people who were enslaved were brought here along the Middle Passage, what they experienced. So that's an area we take a look at. We look at people who are actually on the Middle Passage. We have, I have evidence that I use from a doctor that was on a slave ship. We have a Equiano who's a little boy who was on the slave ship who writes an autobiography and I bring in excerpts from their autobiographies and their journals of what they experienced. And then we kind of end the year looking at, because we, the seventh grade ends right around the time of the Civil War. And we look at, one of the final things we look at is the abolition movement and the, thinking about this idea of what's the best method to bring about change? And we look at some, you know, Frederick Douglass and some of the people that wrote about how to change the hearts and minds of people versus people like John Brown who were really instrumental in just wanting to who were really instrumental in just wanting to flat out break the law to bring about change. And then in eighth grade, we're filled with a lot of examples. And the first one is really what we're talking a lot about now in eighth grade. When we're talking about the struggle for equal rights for women. And we go back to talking about the Seneca Falls where women met to draft a document that was like the Declaration of Independence, but included them. And then we've also started to talk about the different tactics in which women's suffragists used, you know, to bring about change. And we look at, we've been looking at that quite a bit in class. One of the other things we looked at prior to this was the experience that immigrants took through, by going through Ellis Island. And they actually engage in a web quest where they travel through the different sections of Ellis Island and what it was like to actually see the Statue of Liberty for the first time as an immigrant. And then some of the things we'll be looking at going forward is Harlem Renaissance. We look at pictures and audio and as well as some poetry, not in as much detail as sometimes Ms. Balls does, but we look at Langston Hughes and some of the things of what it was like, the pride that was brought about in African Americans through this Harlem Renaissance and the development of jazz music. And then finally, we end up, you know, one of the other things I like to highlight, just some of the things I enjoy teaching is looking at the Japanese internment and understanding how this was a really big impact in World War II. These were Japanese citizens who were actually relocated, placed in imprisonment camps and really forced to stay there throughout the war. So that, those are a couple of areas that we take a look at that kind of brings a different investigation light to some of the topics in those big topics like World War I and the topics of the roaring twenties. And then one of the things that I, we've used, and it was something I borrowed that we use a lot as a department in East Greenbush is we used the student news, which was CNN 10. And I do this sometimes in homeroom. It's a 10-minute clip and I don't do it every day, depending on the topic. Some of the topics are really good. And it's really focused on being a down-the-middle explanation of the day's news. And it's really focused at, for students, middle school and high school. And it looks at, you know, they did a really good job at covering the election this year and talking about, one of my favorite ones was at the end of the year, they did 2020 in review and I polled the kids on what do you think some of the topics are going to be in 2020? They all got, they all got coronavirus, they all got COVID. But they, I was surprised at a lot of the other ones that they got that really impacted our life. You know, they, they, they were really aware of the Kobe Bryant death, which was something that before COVID was a really big deal. And I was shocked, I was, a lot of them were aware of that. So the CNN 10 is a good way to bring in, and they have some good stories that help students kind of understand just generally like what's going on in the world. So some of the resources I pull from, and I do use the Chromebooks a lot. When we were in East Greenbush, we developed a lot of curriculum that went one-to-one. So it's been obviously not as part of a transition despite wanting to be in front of the students when we go remote or when we have remotes, periods. But a lot of the resources I pull from is the PNW Integrated Social Studies ELA Curriculum, which the district is a part of, that's a K through eight curriculum, and it has a lot of good resources to use. The Stanford History Group lessons, they have reading like a historian, which again talks a lot about how to how to look at sources, how to investigate sources. And then this New York State Social Studies Toolkit, which provides, which was developed along with the framework to give teachers kind of a blueprint of how to develop inquiry and inquiry questions in their classroom. There are a lot of resources, and again, that's K through eight, and there's five inquiries per grade. So I don't use them exclusively, but they do bring in some good resources for a lot of the things that we do. And then I'm a member of the Capital District Council for Social Studies of New York State, and they recently have been putting on a lot of programs. One of the ones I went to virtually was Distance and Diversity, and it's engaging students in virtual learning and social justice. And both the Capital District for Social Studies and the PNW BOCES are doing a lot of work to try and, just as we all are, as social studies teacher, to try and keep up to date with a lot of the ways in which the world's changing and how that's, how that should be reflected properly in our curriculum. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa. She's going to talk a little bit about some of the ways she supports what we do in social studies, some of the content and how she helps again with those skills that help me kind of teach the social studies content that I'll go along with the social studies framework.
Thanks, Tom. Like Tom, the ELA instruction in the middle school is primarily guided by the standards. And the ones that we're using are the next generation, sometimes called Next Gen ELA standards. And those were in 2015, we began a review of those. And then in 2017, those were revised. So a lot of similarities to, as Jen mentioned, she and I first met when we were doing the Race to the Top. A lot of the standards are basically the same, just with some revisions. But as part of those Next Gen standards, the thing that I really like is the lifelong practices of readers and writers. And so that's one of the things that I really use to kind of guide my instruction. It talks about students should think and write and listen and read to understand. It talks about reading and writing for multiple purposes, including for pleasure. And it talks about persevering through complex or difficult texts or through difficult writing pieces. About how language can enrich us. So I really like the, that piece of the Next Gen standard. It's one of, definitely one of the things I'm constantly thinking about as I create and decide on what I'm going to be doing in the classroom. I also look at the student demographics, the dynamics, the interests of the students. And I laugh because I would think about that my, the sixth grade this year, I was booktalking a book one day and the kids said, are we going to read that? Are we going to read that? And I said, well, I hadn't really planned, well, please, can we, can we, can we? So we ended up, our first unit this year in sixth grade was completely chosen by them because of the book that I'd booktalked and they were just so fascinated by it. And it ended up being a really great unit with a lot of connections to the pandemic and quarantine and things like that. So it was just kind of a neat thing that came about purely by their interests. But a lot of my instruction changes year to year when I look at who are the students? What are their interests? What are their backgrounds? And then the final thing that I use for my instruction are statements from the standards and statements from NCTE. Tom says he's a member of the Capital District Council on Social Studies. I'm a member of NCTE, which is National Council of Teachers of English. And they routinely put out statements on what should inform and how instruction should look. And so I often will look at those and say, am I doing what is considered to be best practice in ELA instruction? So that's kind of what guides me in the creating the curriculum. There are 28 anchor standards, which is actually a decrease from the original set of standards. And they have to do with reading literature and informational text, with writing, with language. And we would talk about language, that's when we're talking about that grammar, the prepositional phrases with spelling and different things like that, and then speaking and listening. And then I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the standards, but the standards then have, are within those strands, there are grade level standards. And a big difference between ELA and social studies is that the ELA curriculum spirals, which means that some of the standards you'll see in a kindergarten, first, second, third grade class are the same standards you'll see in a ninth or a 10th grade class. It's just that the expectation is, has been raised. So an expectation in finding evidence from the text from a fourth grader to an 11th grader are going to be very different expectations. But at the basic level, it's still the same standard. So it's that complexity that we look at. And then, so I'm really, I feel I'm really lucky with the ELA curriculum because it's not so much content as you would see in social studies. It's skill-based, which allows me a tremendous amount of freedom in what I have the students read and what I have the students write. That doesn't mean that I just kind of willy-nilly choose things. I have a couple of things that guide my choices. I want the students to be reading a variety of texts. You may remember from your own middle school or high school that every sixth grader read this book, every seventh grader read this one, every eighth grader, Romeo and Juliet, I still think is one that's done in ninth grade. We don't have that at Menan's. And so what I try to do is bring in some of that old literature. We've read Poe, we've read Whitman, we've read T.S. Eliot. And also then bring in some contemporary literature, brand-new literature. I was reading on a website just over the weekend and the person said, you know, that's, if we think about the literature that students are reading now, in 20, 30, 40 years, it may, that literature may actually end up being classic literature. So I do bring in things from the, what's called the canon of literature, but then I'm constantly infusing that with things that are new. I use shorter works, I use novels, poetry, drama, all genre, all cultural perspectives to really get that variety in the classroom. Within that, students are asked to read and/or listen. And then the big piece is respond critically. And we, sometimes we do that with writing, sometimes we do that discussion, sometimes we do that individually or in teams. And then that next bullet is really the key for me in ELA. It's that emphasis on critical thinking. And I'll often tell the students, and I think I even said it to one of the classes today, I don't care if, really, if you can identify a helping verb from a linking verb. Does it really matter at the end of the day if you know the difference between the two? You're not going to go to a job and your boss come in and say, so today I have a list of 10 verbs and sentences. You need to tell me if it's a helping or a linking verb. That doesn't happen. But what your boss will ask you to do is something that involves thinking. And by practicing and learning how to think critically and then express that thinking, either through speaking or writing, that's what your boss is going to ask you to do. So we really focus on, and the students are, really know that that's what I want them to do. Writing in the Common Core is three different genres. It's argument, which in the lower grades is opinion. It's informative or explanatory, and it's narrative. There is also an emphasis on inquiry, which you may remember as research. And they're different, inquiry is kind of, what can I find out about something? I'm curious about something and research is really, I'm looking for something. Inquiry is tough in a middle school level. We do work some of it and try to practice it, but it's really tough when we don't know as much about something to know what's not, what do we not know? But we do, do research and inquiry. And those first four pieces really are what allow me to support Tom because there's so much flexibility, there's so much choice there. As I mentioned before, with my text, because I'm not required to read a specific novel or short story, I can really pick and choose what will fit with his curriculum, what will fit with what's going on in the world around us, what will fit my students right now. And what, same thing with writing, what do I feel the students need to write? Is it going to be more of a narrative where they're reflecting on something? Is it going to be more of an argument where they have to choose a side on something? And then we get to that last piece, the fifth piece, which is grammar vocabulary spelling. And in the middle school, it's not going to be a 10 words a week spelling quiz. It's not going to be, you need to, we have a grammar book and we go page by page by page. It's really embedded in either mini units, mini lessons, or just in whatever we're doing. And that's kind of what this curriculum is in sixth, third, eighth grade. So not quite as specific as Tom's, which is kind of nice because it allows me for choice in that cross-curricular integration. And there are kind of three ways that I can do that. I can either use that with, as a major unit. And with those major units, I can really have a heavy emphasis on things like social justice or current events or related to some type of diversity. That may not be the core reason we're doing it. We're still hitting it for the core lens. We're still hitting theme and character development or symbolism or text-based evidence, things like that. But the topic that we're looking at is on social justice. It may be a book that has to do with Japanese internment camps, looking at it through the view of, what is it like? We read an eighth grade Unbroken, which is a story of Louis Amperini, an Olympic runner, who became a prisoner in a Japanese POW camp. And we looked at what was it like to be a prisoner in a Japanese camp? And then we looked at the experiences of Japanese here in the United States and we were able to compare and contrast that. So again, but we were looking at the, looking at it through an English lens, an ELA lens. Sometimes we use picture books or short stories. And we can use these as a mentor text or a touchstone, which means that throughout a unit, we can come back and say, well, let's go back to the book that we read, the picture book that we read. What did the author do to develop the character? What are some of the words and the language and the actions? And the topic of the book might be something that relates to social studies, but we're really coming at it from a different angle, the ELA angle, as opposed to the social studies. And then the final opportunity that I have is an independent reading choice. And I say it's an opportunity for cross-curricular integration. And then I put choice in there because I am really, really, I feel strongly that students in independent reading should have choice. The goal of independent reading is to develop individuals who love to read. Some of the students already love that, some are kind of like, yeah, if it's the right book, and some say want nothing to do with it. Nope, absolutely not. So by allowing choice, I have a much better chance of getting them to become habitual readers, lifelong readers. However, having said that, when I booktalk, I will often bring in books that will have to do with whatever Tom is talking about or with current events or that might represent and reflect some of the students in the classroom. And so that's a good, I was just talking this earlier today, that I'm looking to somehow be able to bring in a first chapter Friday, where I read the first chapter of a book to students to try to get their interest. And I've already started looking at topics, I read at titles, and a lot of those have to do with what Tom is teaching or what's going on in the world around us. So three ways that I am able to bring in that social studies piece. And then some examples, and I had a really hard time coming up with examples because as Jen said, I've been here for three years and I've probably done a different curriculum with each grade every year because I like to try new things. I get bored with things, I find things that look interesting or that will match the students. But here's some of the ones I have done. Prior to being at BOCES and at Water, or excuse me, and at Menan's, when I was at Water of Elite, I did some there. In sixth grade, the book Seed Folks, which is by Paul Fleishman, I really can hit on the ideas Tom mentioned of creating societies and communities. And so we can look at through that English lens, what does it mean to be part of a community? How can the actions of one person impact a community? How do prejudice and racism impact individuals, impact the community, impact relationships within that community? So that's one book that we've done. Another piece that we did in sixth grade is The Circuit, which is a short story by Francisco Jimenez, who was a migrant, a child of a migrant farmers. And it's the story of a young boy who is also, his family are migrant farm workers. And I like this one because, as Tom said, being able to bring in some of the New York piece. There are a lot of migrant farm workers in New York still. We look especially down from us, downstate with some of the orchards. And so to be able to make that connection and then talk about, here's what was going on in the 1960s, here's what's going on today, how are they similar? How are they different? We read about Cesar Chavez and we talk about what is an activist? And then we've looked at Greta Thunberg, Malala, as teen activists. And you're becoming teenagers, what can you do in your world? And how can you use some of the same things that Malala and Greta Thunberg have done and that Cesar Chavez did? Then in seventh grade, one of the books that we have read is called Indian No More. Fascinating story about the termination policy, which was new to me, even though I have a social studies background, where Native Americans were stripped of their identity, their tribe ceased to exist. And so we read a story of a young girl who is relocated with her family from Oregon to California and her struggle with identity. What happens when your identity is taken from you and what determines your identity? And so within that, we bring in the Trail of Tears. We talk about the experiences of Native Americans, which ties right into Tom's seventh grade curriculum. This year, I actually just won a book over the winter last year called Legacy, which is by Nicky Grimes. Poetry just came out January 5th, so I got an early copy of it. And it's poetry from the Harlem Renaissance. And last year, we read some work by, works by Langston Hughes and began a discussion on the Harlem Renaissance. So this year, I'd like to broaden that by bringing in some of the poetry. And I've also thought about talking with Ms. Testo because each of the pieces in the book are combined with artwork from the Harlem Renaissance. So combining short stories, poetry, art, and look at the context that they were written in and what was the legacy of them and what would, that we have, still have today. That's a seventh grade examples. And then eighth grade, we are right in the middle of our defining America unit, which is a new one this year. And it's been really fun to do with what they're doing in social studies. In this unit, we're looking at the diversity of the American experience. And we're answering the question, what does it mean to be American? So throughout this unit, I've asked students to, they have a document to stop and say, okay, think about what we've learned and think about how would you answer that question now? In a week, how do you answer that? In a week, how do you answer that question now after we've read this? And we've talked about how America is a nation of immigrants, again, going right with Tom's work. And how immigrants are kind of uniquely positioned to answer the question of what does it mean to be American because they know what it means to not be American. And so we've been reading pieces, listening to audio stories from NPR. We've been, we spent a good amount of time reading The New Colossus, which is the poem M.O. Lazarus wrote for the Statue of Liberty. So Tom had already spoken about the New Colossus as it relates to the Statue of Liberty and immigrants coming through. And then we turned and looked at it with symbolism and poetic devices and illusions and things like that. So kind of a really neat way to look at a piece of literature from a social studies lens and with an ELA lens. And then another unit that we'll be doing is Inside Out and Back Again, a novel that is about the Vietnamese war. And the experiences of a young girl who refugee from Vietnam after the fall of Saigon and what are her experiences and what is kind of that universal experience of refugees? So those are the some specific examples. I think there was, was there one more before this or did we lose it? Well, I must have gotten lost. I was just going to talk and I can do that without the slide. Some of the resources that I use. There are three big ones. One is, and I think Ms. Wilson, you know this one, we need diverse books. It's a fairly newish-ish group. And the goal for that is that children should be able to see themselves in the pages of a book. And I really like that quote, being able, all children should be able to see themselves in the pages of a book. And I kind of use that to inform what I purchase for the classroom, what books I book talk, books that I will use as those touchstones or picture book, read aloud, things like that. That it should reflect and honor the lives of all of the children in the classroom. Another one is called Education Amplifier. And it's a program that looks at nonpartisan conversations up around social justice. And last year we had some posters that I'd received over the chalkboard that represented a bunch of many individuals, youth from different races, ethnicities, backgrounds involved in many different types of social justice. And then the third one, which I think is going away, which makes me very sad, is the Global Read Aloud. And that's a program in which we will read a book, read aloud at the same time of the year as other individual, other students across the world at the same time and communicate with other students about our experiences reading. So those are the three resources. And then Tom, do you want that or you want me to do it? We forgot to decide that.
You're on a roll and your camera's on, I'll let you go.
Okay. So the two things as we think about moving forward and what we're doing and how we're staying current and how we're continuing to make sure that the education that the students are getting is the best. One of these is this shift that we're trying to make in the classrooms. And it was, this is from a professional development that I went to with Ms. Wilson. It was actually led by Mrs. Maslin. And one of the things that I took from that is that we should have this shift from a tolerance for diversity in which the focus is on the students and to a transformation for equity where we look at our own practices. And so that's something I've kind of been, and I know Tom is, we've been thinking about is how do our, our teaching practices reflect equity and how are we bringing equity into our practices? And then the idea of professional development. And how, what are the best practices just in straight educate, in ELA and social studies instruction, but also in ensuring that all voices are heard? And whether that's those marginalized groups that Tom was talking about throughout history, whether it's bringing in diverse voices in literature and the books that I have in the classroom. And then also making sure that it's all students' voices in the classroom, that we're hearing them and we're giving them the opportunity to talk. And that's kind of what we have for you. So we will definitely take questions if you have anything. We are, both of our emails are on the website. So if you, something that you have in the future that you have a question about, you're absolutely welcome to email us.
Lisa and Tom, we appreciate that, very comprehensive. I speak dive.
I'm sorry, I've got a lag going, I can't tell if people are talking. Okay, thank you for that, that, that was very interesting. I just wanted to ask you if you thought, you know, as board members, is there something more that you need or what do you see? Jeff, can you guys hear me? Cause you're spinning on me or you'll?
I can hear you.
All right, sorry. Everybody's spinning, so I'm like frozen or. Okay, is there anything more you would need from us to continue this work?
I mean, I think Lisa and I are both, you know, we both still have connections to the Capital Region BOSI's. And I think we're both attempting to try and do the best for what's, what our students need. And I think trying to stay up to date, you know, I always think about it is, I, I wouldn't want a doctor to do the same thing he did 30 years ago. I want to be always on the cutting edge to try and figure out, you know, what works in the classroom and what applies. So I, I think we're always trying to stay being, you know, networking with professionals. I know I keep in contact with a lot of the teachers I worked with at East Green Bush and a lot of the people at Capital Region BOSI's and, you know, attend the Capital District Social Studies events that I really see fit that would help our students. So I think that's one of the ways I try and do it off the top of my head. Isn't really anything I can think of specifically, but those are some of the ways, you know, I approach it to try and, you know, maintain best practices and stay current.
Canavo, you want to make any closing comments?
No, I just wanted to, you know, thank you to Tom and Lisa for putting together this presentation. And, you know, the hard work that they do every day in order to plan and stay connected. It's not easy to be a department of one. So I think their professional connections are critical. And, you know, Dr. Long and I will continue to support the needs that they have in those areas to remain connected to their colleagues, especially in current learning situations. Thank you.
Tom and Lisa, when we talked earlier today, I did ask if you would mind staying on until the end of the meeting in case there are any comments in public comment that you would be better able to address. So if you could do that, that would be great. If, if your kids call, I understand that as a priority.
Can I chime before we go to the next section?
Absolutely, go ahead, Joe.
Just so, right, thank you, Ms. Ball and Mr. Schweitzer. I wish I could say all three of mine are thrilled with eighth grade history. Not. So on that, and I think I had the, some original questions earlier in the season based on last year, what happened. And I know our community has been involved and I know there's been a lot of information about what's happening in our country. And it sounds like you're bringing current and or possibly local events into the history class. A lot of that based on Black Lives Matter movements. And, you know, around elections, I heard the kids talking about that. How, how fast? Or you, you said you're, you know, you're, you're attending BOSI seminars and there's information about changing and about updating the curriculum. How fast can you do something? Do you have that flexibility in your class to talk about something that may or may not be relevant with the current situation to let children know, you know, what's going on or be able to explain something about what's going on? Or is that something that needs to be addressed at a, at a higher level and then trickle down to you?
I mean, I think a lot of my, the way I address it, a lot of times is I try and make connections to the things we talk about and the things we are talking about in history. You know, with that, with that said, we, in the eighth grade, we've been talking about, a lot about the struggle that women went through to get the right to vote. And when they went on a parade, the lack of protection that they got from the police when they were parading. So some of the things I try and bring in those things that we've been talking about that reflect to that, to those current events. But, you know, and again, through kind of showcasing some of the, you know, the CNN 10 and some of the current events of the articles I can bring in. Those are ways I try and do it to try and be able to bring light to how it connects to historically what we're talking about.
If I could here too, and Bill, and I'll ask Jen Canabo to chime in as well. We have other structures in place in particular this year, knowing, knowing we were coming back very differently and we would have kids in different places with different experiences. And with different abilities to adjust back to school. Incorporated some other things this year, both through the advisory that Tom talked a little bit about and through some social emotional learning that expand beyond ELA and social studies, but really look at that whole child approach. And actually you're going to see some of this in my budget presentation tonight too. I might suggest that maybe we use tonight's curriculum report as the jumping off point. Tonight you heard about ELA and social studies. I think one of the things we are blessed, blessed by in Menan's as being such a small school. They don't need to be separate and apart and the relationships are there across the subjects and the contents. And, and our staff know our kids. And that's huge. That maybe tonight is that jumping off point, we've, we've talked tonight about ELA and social studies. Maybe either in February or March, we could talk about the SEL, social emotional learning components that we've put in and the advisory and kind of work our way through across the year. And then come back together at the end and see kind of how that works across all the content. And it does look a little bit different at middle school because they are going from class to class to class. They aren't necessarily with the same person all day. So I'll give the board the opportunity to think about that. But that's something certainly we could look at moving forward.
That actually sounds good and we can probably incorporate it into the retreat information we've been discussing and have that all come together as, as a a little pump back feed or not, but if you can hear me, that's great. If not, then let's move on.
Hey, anyone else? Well, thank you again, Tom and Lisa for, for putting this together for us. Very much appreciate it. We'll move along to business office for information and close for the information of the board are copies of the filing warrants for the month of December 2020. We've, looks like we've got Fund A, warrant numbers 26, 27, 28, 31, and 33. And Fund H, which is warrant number 13. Are there any questions about those specific warrants? I don't have everybody on my screen at once. Is it good?
No, sorry.
Okay. Then we will move along to the business office for approval. If we can, if there are no questions about the budget transfer, can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Menan's Union Free School District approve the attached budget transfers for December 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries, we'll move along to the treasurer's report and close for the board's approval is a copy of the treasurer's report for the month ending December 31st, 2020. Are there any questions about that report? Okay, can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Menan's Union Preschool District approve the treasurer's report for the month ending December 31st, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll move along to establishment of non-resident tuition rates for McKinney Vento reimbursement purposes. In circumstances where students protected under the McKinney Vento legislation move to permanent housing outside of the Menan's Union Free School District, but choose to remain at Menan's School, we are able to directly bill the new district of residents. To do so, we must utilize board approved tuition rates. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, not counting, please.
Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Menan's Union Free School District establish the following estimated non-resident tuition rates for the 2020, 2021 school year. K6 regular ed $12,424. Grade seven, eight regular education $19,541. Grade K6 special ed $55,754. Grade seven, eight special ed $62,871.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution carries, move along to donation. We have a few of them. And I get a resolution, please.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Menan's Union Preschool District accept the following donations as listed. Heim's Auto Care $150, Holiday Giving and Student Needs. Simmons Tool Company $1,630, Holiday Giving and Student Needs. And Pay It Forward Together various school supplies. And thank you for those donations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. Yes, thank you for those donations, we appreciate that. Contracts for approval, Parsons Child and Family Center Agreement for Services 2021. And close for the board is a copy of the agreement between the Menan's Union Preschool District and the Parsons Child and Family Center. If there are no questions about that contract, can I have resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Menan's Union Free School District approve the agreement for services between Menan's Union Free School District and Parsons Child and Family Center for the 2020, 2021 school year as per the attached agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution carries, move along to personnel matters, Certified Healthcare Substitute, Ryan Henderhand. Can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Menan's Union Preschool District approve Ryan Henderhand healthcare substitute for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries, substitute custodian Philip Lipscomb. Can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Menan's Union Free School District approve Philip Lipscomb as a substitute custodian for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. We have two seconds there, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, Court.
And you still have my seconds.
I'm sorry.
Okay, substitute teacher, Gento Russo, can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Menan's Union Preschool District approve Agento Russo as a substitute teacher for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries, Board of Education Matters, CSE, CPSC recommendations. Can I get a recommend, a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Menan's Union Free School District approve the CSE, CPSC recommendations as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries, student matters, class size update as of the 6th of January. Looks like 178 in person, well, actually, I'm sorry, 308 students, all virtual. Sorry. Have it was, we had two sets, but. Okay. Superintendent's comments.
Bear with me, I'm trying to unmute. To Jeff's point, obviously we have moved to remote. That is primarily doing, due to staffing related to we have finally caught up with a lot of our neighboring districts who have done themselves in this position. It took us just a little bit while longer. Also, I will note, and it, we had an approval on the agenda tonight for the substitute healthcare worker. That is in anticipation of beginning testing of our students. That is required testing if we end up in a color coded zone. Though the guidance and direction on that has changed a little bit with new information coming out. We may be able we may be able to move forward with that testing prior to being designated as a zone. One of the questions that has yet to be fully answered at this point, can we use those tests that we already have in hand? It looks like it's leaning towards yes, so that is good news. And our one school nurse, along with that additional person, we have planned accordingly to be able to do that. Similar, what you may have heard in the news today, that teachers are part of the 1B vaccination that was supposed to become available today. And for any of you who tried at 4 o'clock, a webpage went live. And if you tried to get yourself, Jen, a test, I don't know if you were successful, but it wasn't easy if you got on after 4:05. That said, I will tell you, like a lot of things COVID-related, our BOCs is being proactive with that and making some connections and working to try work towards a regional approach for all teachers in the region. That would also include our Manans teachers. And also, there's a subgroup from the MAT that have been looking at that. We've been having discussions around. So there are pieces and parts of that which we cannot control, but we are all working collectively and diligently to see that our staff can get vaccinated as soon as possible. And I guess the only other thing I've add is obviously, we have gone remote on our board meetings again. We made that decision, actually prepared to making the decision that our students would be going remote this week. That was really, looking back at the protocols, we have faced to minimize exposure to people at school. And one of the ways we do that is by limiting the people who come in the building. And that is a decision we will make on a month-by-month basis as we see how things unfold moving forward. Next, and somewhat COVID-related, we did send out our survey last year, last for middle school families to see if there were folks who wanted to change their instructional preference as we move to the second semester. That survey will close at the end of this week, and that gives us two weeks to plan and prepare for the transition of students, depending on the choices that are made. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about tonight, we know we just came off of a building project, but that our facilities are something that we need to continue to keep tabs on and make sure we are planning accordingly for that. To that end, every five years, districts are required to conduct a building condition survey. This year is our year. CS Arch has been in doing the preliminary work on that, just finishing up the last few pieces and parts, gathering the information to bring back to us what it is we need to be looking forward as far as needs with our facility. And I anticipate at this point, they will probably be joining us, not at the February meeting, but the March meeting to what they've learned and what their recommendations would be for us.
Okay, great. That's timely, too, because that'll help with our planning with CASDA. Great, thank you, Dr. Long. Any comments or questions? Okay, we'll move along to principal's comments. Ms. Cannavaro?
Okay. Hello again, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. So since our last board meeting in December, we had our second round of parent-teacher conferences with our families that we did not meet with in November. And all of those conferences happened virtually and went very well. I think overall, our teachers connected with families and were able to discuss progress and help families navigate on the different platforms that we are using. We also had our winter themed days that we did the three days right before the holiday break. And that was really just an effort to have a little bit of fun, bring kids together, whether they were home or in person. And it included dressing up in holiday gear and pajama days, and then also just some what we were looking forward to in 2021. We tried to put those out on Facebook and share those pictures with families. So the kids really had a nice time, and I think it was just a nice little bit of time to take a deep breath and enjoy each other and have a little bit of fun before we headed off for the holiday break. Then we also, I wanted to just take a moment to update you. We brought a group of students back in K-5 when we did our reelection period. They came back to us in mid-December, and they spent probably about a week and a half with us before the holiday break. I think the changes in classrooms, the kids coming back, it really went very well. The kids that are back are so happy to be back, and their classmates were so happy to see them. So things have gone well, and everybody really has kind of fallen into the routine, like they didn't skip a beat. So it was great to see them back. And then, last but not least, it wasn't on my principal's updates, but just as a point of interest, our high school fair is continuing, even though we are doing it virtually. Last week, the students had an opportunity to hear from four of our high schools. Mrs. Vandenberg and her intern, Melissa Johnson, arranged that with our eighth graders. And then tomorrow night at 7 o'clock, our families will have the same opportunity, our eighth grade families, to hear from our high schools and ask any questions that they may have as they gear up to make their decisions for ninth grade next year.
Go ahead, Bill.
Hello.
Hey, Bill.
Ms. Cannavaro, right? We don't get a chance as a board to see and/or speak with teachers in our community. So I need to first say thank you, right? Thank them for everything they're doing. Can you give us a sense of the teachers, how they feel about COVID, their fears, their worries, their concerns, and where they are in the building and with the, you know, students? I do know in every report that comes out, it's still the safest place for kids. Where do our teachers fit into that? And how are they dealing with all this? Can you give us some update on that, please?
Absolutely. So, you know, I think our teachers, just like everybody else out there, has, you know, been on quite a journey with this. And I think, you know, back in August, when we were faced with the reality of offering in-person and, you know, remote instruction, I think people were nervous, and they were, they had a lot of questions. And I think people still have questions. But I think overall, they have embraced what Dr. Long and I have asked them to do and Mrs. Vandenberg. And I think that they're seeing that the work we're doing in schools is working if we just stick with it. You know, and I couldn't ask for a better group of educators to work with because overall, I have to tell you, like, you know, one of the things that Dr. Long and I talked a lot about was like the fatigue setting in, right? Like, you're really strong on your protocols in the beginning, and then over time, people start to fade away. And they're not. I mean, our teachers are with us 100%, doing exactly everything that we need them to do on a day-to-day basis. You know, and I think that at times, people are tired, just like our kids and our families, but they lift each other up, and we keep moving forward. Because, you know, while, you know, I sent out an email this morning to staff saying, like, you know, going remote today, I'm sure that they felt one of three ways. Either we're gate that we're going remote, apprehensive that we're going remote, or we're just like, okay, we're going to keep plugging along, you know? And no matter where they feel, no matter where they are today, I would say over the course of the school year, everybody lands in one of those categories on a different day. So, you know, we just, we continue to work really hard to support each other. And when somebody's having a tough day, I think when people try to rally around them, just like we would do with our kids and, you know, our students. And I can even say the same for me. Like, if I'm having a tough day, the teachers and Dr. Long, they will rally around me. So, you know, I think I'm really, we're blessed to be in a place where everybody knows everybody. And I think that makes a really hard situation a little bit more tenable.
If I could just add to that a little bit, too, Bill. We have made it a pointed effort. Jen and I are meeting at least once a month, if not twice, with the MAT leadership. And that's kind of our first question. How's everybody doing? Is there anything we need to address? Are there concerns out there? And they've actually gone so far as to identify kind of their COVID go-to person within the association, so that if people aren't necessarily coming, aren't necessarily comfortable coming directly to Jen or I, they kind of have a place to go, and then we will have follow-up conversations. I'll be honest with you, a couple of things have come forward, and we've been able to resolve them. But we have that mechanism in place, and I think it provides an extra level of comfort for everybody involved.
And I appreciate that. And the reason I asked is twofold. One, you know, I have a general concern about people, right? I'm not sure everyone's okay. But moving forward, next year, the year after, and the toll it's taking on people's, not only children, the adults, their emotional wellness, and going into our budget season, are we looking and prepared to address COVID-related issues for teachers? Whether it be, I don't even know, time off, social worker, being able to talk to... I don't really know. But understanding where everybody's at and hearing that they're currently doing well is great. Let's look to the future and see if other needs are needed. Other needs are needed. That's...
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move along to informational material. Couple items. Martin Luther King Day is next Monday. There is no school, it's the 18th. Let's see, and our next board meeting is Monday, February 8th at 6:30. As far as informational material, I don't think we have anything else information material-wise. We'll talk about it next in miscellaneous. So move along to miscellaneous. Does anybody have anything?
Yeah, I just quickly wanted to commend Dr. Long for the statement she put out last week, last Thursday, I believe. It was, I thought, an incredibly measured and reasonable statement in a time that seems to be anything but. So I'd like to thank her for doing that on behalf of the school.
You're welcome, John.
Go ahead, Bill.
I don't want to take all the time, right? Someone else chime in, please, you know, please. So I have two things I wanted to mention. One, so, yeah, so we're knee-deep in a pandemic. There's a lot of stuff going on. My biggest concern, and always has been, is food insecurity for children. Prior to the pandemic, you know, this country has a horrible number of, like, 1 in 6 children don't have meals to eat on a consistent basis. The latest information I got that was able to come out through NISBA is 1 in 4 currently are food insecure or have no idea where their next meal is coming from. I know the school is providing meals, breakfast and lunch for children. Is there more that we can do to satisfy the needs of our community that may need additional help? And is there any way that that resource could be expressed to our community? I don't really know how you would advertise it, but if a need is there and we have the means to, we should be helping those that need it.
So I'll speak to that. We are continuing our backpack program, which has expanded a little bit. You know, we have some new resources added as staff, which has bolstered, that Karen continues to work on at our school nurse, along with Ms. Mondina, our school social worker. And I, you're right, it's very difficult to kind of advertise, do you need help? And identify the people who need it without creating some level of discomfort perhaps for those folks. I think, again, we'll go back to, our teachers know our kids, and our school knows our community pretty well. And I think they kind of, we get to know who those kids are pretty organically through those connections. And then we do some specific outreach to address that. So, you know, I certainly think we have a pretty good process in place, and we are working hard to identify and capture those kids. But certainly, I for one am always willing to do more if there's more to be done that we can do within the confines of our capabilities.
Do we have any updated number on our homeless population currently?
You're going to see, I don't want to talk off the top of my head, Bill. You're going to see it in the parameters, though, in a few minutes in the budget presentation, at least as of last week.
Okay. Last thing I just want to mention, and again, outside-the-box thinking, and with everything going on, and maybe not enough people physically at the school building to do what needs to be done, if we could, if there's a way or an option or an opportunity to get people background or fingerprinted and be able to call on them to perhaps just help and offer their services as needed without going remote. But again, the consistency and the safety of children in the school, which everybody agrees that is the place to be. But if there's a way to keep kids in, and it's a matter of calling on our community, who has always supported the school, to say, hey, we need three people for whatever. If that's an option, I'm just throwing it out there as something to maybe look out in the future. Thank you for everybody.
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else? Miscellaneous? I have nobody else, I'll go. Bill, building on your, you know, the advocacy piece, right, for kids. You know, one of the things I was going to mention was, NISBA New York State School Boards is doing their Capitol Conference on February 3rd, that it will be virtual. But it's our time to, you know, talk advocacy with them. And we're talking about the whole child here, not just their educational needs, but also their health needs, their food needs, all that. So, you know, the advocacy that we do brings in additional dollars for our district's budget, so we can do more programs and support more kids overall. So I would encourage board members, you don't even have to be a board member to attend this. You just need to be a public school advocate. So February 3rd, NISBA, they do it every year. They usually do it in person, obviously. They'll be doing it remotely, at Julie Hell, right at the Capitol Center downtown. But this is your opportunity to be, you know, more involved at the advocacy level when we're talking about advocating for kids and more programs and things that we do for them. The other thing I had was, I sent an email today, so we don't have enough, you know, I got it so late in the afternoon from NISBA, the data that you asked for on board reelection. There's some documents and some reports that you got. I forwarded from NISBA today about all of the discussion we had last month around board term lengths and such. So there's a lot of comprehensive data on there. It's broken down by areas, meaning BOCs or regions. It's got every school in the state listed. There's a lot of data there, so it should answer a lot of your questions. It talks about reelection percentages and how actually that's gone up over the last few years in general, of, you know, board members staying on for additional terms. So hopefully that will lead us, if we can make a note, to have more, to put it on the board agenda for next month to talk further. Because there's a lot of data there and a lot to digest. And I just got it today and forwarded it on to you, and I wouldn't expect we could talk about it tonight yet.
If there's no objection, I'll plan to add it to the agenda as a discussion item again in February.
Perfect, yep. And the last thing I had was related to, this is for Gene, the National School Board Association. I typically go to that. I've done that either through my own dollar or through working for companies that I have and such. And I've not gone every year because it's obviously a major expense when you're talking about flying, you know, cross-country, et cetera, for that. It's virtual this year, and I would encourage folks to sign up for that. It is April 8th through the 10th. And I guess this will be my formal way of saying, Gene, can you please register me for that for April? It's going to be virtual. This is a great chance to talk, not just within New York State, but also in different regions, you know, just about what school districts are doing around the country. It's helped me in my thinking kind of outside of the New York box and all of our, you know, the things we do here in New York. It's helped me think a little more broadly. I've had some very interesting people over the years. So I would encourage folks to do that if they so do so, because we don't have to incur all the travel expenses and hotels and everything, which gets to be a pretty costly item otherwise, so it's a unique opportunity.
No problem, Jeff. I'll look into that for you.
Thank you. So it's NSBA, National School Boards Association. Lastly, I would just, I'm going to say selfishly, go Bills. You know, we made it one week, first victory in 25 years. You can put your thumbs down all you want, Mr. Nevens. We're rolling this year, so hopefully, I know I have other Bills fans on this call. Mr. Schweitzer, I know you're a Bills fan, so go Bills this week. Anybody else? I will go to the public comment period. Please note- I will go to the public comment period. Um, please note during the public comment sessions, uh, members of the community may address the board on agenda and non-agenda items. The board president may limit remarks of individual speakers to a reasonable time, and speakers must identify themselves in the topic on they would, uh, which they would like to make remarks. Does anybody have anything? I don't see anything in the chat, but I do see one email that I will read. I just got, uh, Mercado, uh, thank you Vanessa for your email. Thank you to Ms. Canaveral for reading to the students during the break. I'm very excited to interact with her every night. We should make sure there's a fair opportunity here, Ms. Canaveral, maybe have some guest readers read books to students during the next break. Thank you, Vanessa. Just thank you, Ms. Canaveral.
Just repeat the email address, boecomments@manans.org, if anybody has anything else.
I'll ask a small question. Uh, I think it was written, first line, Schweitzer, um, introduced. He was speaking about the social studies curriculum, and I know this is cross-reference with Ball, uh, related to civic. Um, and as far as civic readiness, that type of thing. I know we learned about New York. We learned broadly about some certain things. Are there, are there certain activities or things that you're doing around civic engagement? And then, you know, kids in middle school, I know this is a little more slanted, you know, the high school, but are kids learning about kind of their civic responsibility in some fashion during their middle school?
So a lot of, uh, yeah, a lot of the, um, a lot of the civic readiness, um, comes from a couple of forms that we try and do. Um, a lot of that, in the second grade, um, we take a look at, you know, the Constitution at work and what opportunities there are. I know it's a little different as a middle schooler, um, but we really look at, um, the rights outlined in the Constitution and how those are practiced throughout history. Um, the other thing with the inquiry model that I discussed in a lot of the resources that the, um, kind of state has built into the framework. Um, there's a piece that talks about taking informed action. So that, you know, that looks at, like, um, what does that mean in current day? Like, um, how do we express, what are ways that people express freedom of speech today? Or what are the ways that, um, so there's a piece that, and it's a really challenging piece, I'm not gonna lie, um, with looking at that, at that model and some of the things in social studies. Um, but getting students, um, to take action and wh- where is their voice or how can they express, um, some of the things that they've learned, to take action based upon historical events. So those are a couple areas that, a couple areas, um, we look at.
Yeah, I mean, I don't expect the need is both. I think on a deep dive, it's really, it's the bridge, right, due to high school. Is more engaging as a result of the passion that you guys for them.
And I can just act. I, I, oh, Tom.
I'm sorry. I mean, one of the things, like I said, in eighth grade, we're really talking about is the women's suffrage movement. And one of the things I had them take action on in their homework was taking a look at, um, looking at some graphics of present day and, um, areas that, you know, um, you know, people polled through Pew Research, what, what do they think in terms of whether, um, women's equality has gone far, what, whether women truly do have enough equality and where area where that has fallen short. And I asked them to think, like, do, would women suffer just 100 years later, you know, in 2020, 2021, 100 years later from the time they got the, do you think women evaluate? Do you think women would, the, the women of the suffrage movement would be happy with where women are today? Would be voting, would getting the right to vote be enough? Uh, what more would they want? Um, what things would they look to change today?
And I was just gonna add two separate pe- two other pieces, too. Um, each year we participate in the Elks Club Essay Writing Contest. And that is, this year it was, um, can patriotism be democratic? Or did, did I say that correctly? Yes. Can patriotism be democratic? And also, last year it was.
I think it was, uh, how can patriotism be demonstrated?
There you go. I was like, that doesn't sound right.
How do you demonstrate patriotism?
Yes. And, um, last year it was about the freedom of speech. So as we work through that, co- combining the social studies piece of the, the Elks Club citizenship and then the writing piece in ELA, that's another way we do it. And then I've also done several times looking at, at, uh, at activists throughout literature.
Thank you.
Jeff, I do think we got one more comment.
Did it come in the chat or did it come in?
No, no, we're, we don't, we don't, attendees can't do the chat. It's just through the email.
Okay, um. Oh, there we go. Okay, just came through. Um, from, from Mercado, um, I know we discussed creating diversity inclusive. A year or so, this is something we are still trying to do.
So I think the, and certainly, Jeff, I don't want to step on your toes, the short answer is, uh, yes. And actually, that came out loud and clear in the work that the board did at their retreat. Um, and we will highlight and preview some of that in tonight's, um, budget hearing. And that will kind of be the basis for some of the work that we do moving forward. So the short answer is yes. Um, the other piece of it, though, is those typical events that have been held that kind of, that we would go to as that group are not in existence this year because of the circumstances we are in. Um, that said, um, it may be, again, another future board presentation. Uh, but Mrs. Canav has had the opportunity to, uh, work closely with our neighbors in North Colony through a project like this and is, uh, willing to take what she has learned and bring that to us. We're just in the infancy stages of those discussions, uh, but certainly look forward to continuing to have them.
Okay, that's all I see. I don't see anything more.
Nope. The only thing I would make sure the public is aware of is, once we adjourn the meeting, we will go right into our budget workshop. More than welcome to stay for that.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn public session?
I don't know whose turn it is, but I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Closed. All right, we are adjourned. We'll be going into the budget workshop. Do we want to start right away or do we want to take a minute?
I'll leave that up to the group. I'll go and get my screen ready and you let me know when you are ready.
Sixty seconds.
I will tell Tom and Lisa they are more than welcome to sign off should they choose to do that.
Okay.
And thank you again.
Yeah, thanks, Tom and Lisa.
Take care.
Thank you.
I will be right back.
Can folks see the presentation up on the screen?
Yes.
I should have told Ms. Mrs. Ball that I was reading the poem this evening. Bill, were you reading the poem this evening also?
I got home about 40 minutes before the meeting, so no, I didn't, I haven't, I haven't done homework yet. I'm, I'm pretty sure there's people waiting for math help.
We are doing a deep dive into the poem.
Okay.
I am also. Thank you.
All right, let me see if Courtney was back. She stepped away. Okay. All right. I think we have everybody. You can see my screen. You should have a copy of the presentation as well. You should have a copy of the parameters. I will tell you, when I, I have two screens and when I play the PowerPoint, it does some strange things, so just bear with me. Um, so here we are in budget season again, as we, as I was looking back and preparing for tonight and working through it with Kathy, and we pulled back some of the stuff that we did. It doesn't seem like that long ago that we were, we were having these conversations, um, in a very challenging time, um, when we had to adopt after, uh, many of the implications of COVID. Before I go to the next screen, I will ask if anybody knows what my first bullet point says.
I guess.
What you're gonna say. So, here we go. Keep in mind, we will budget from the perspective of we, we, what we know to be true at this moment in time. Um, probably more so than any other year, except for maybe the tail end of the budget process last year. Uh, there is no doubt that that is going to change as we move through the process this year. So really, though, what drives the work we do in developing the budget doesn't change dramatically because of the circumstances we are in. What will shape our process is what do we want for our students? And a lot of this conversation is a carryover for some, from some of the things we were discussing in the meeting this evening. Um, you know, that's really the social, emotional piece of what do kids need? But at the same time, what do we want for our students from a programmatic, um, perspective? Um, we, we mentioned that phrase a little bit quite a few times during the board meeting tonight, that whole child approach. And how can we accommodate both of these things? I also alluded to, in tonight's meeting, the work that we did recently as a board to draft some overarching goals that are going to, um, shape the work that we do moving forward with CASDA on developing some objectives to achieve those goals and some measurable benchmarks. And really, um, some strategic planning that's not a one-year set of goals, but, uh, long-range guiding practices. Um, that includes student achievement and success, social, emotional learning, um, recognizing the diversity that makes up our community and, uh, responding accordingly. And then the fiscal responsibility we have as a board and a district. So what are the mitigating factors? And every year we talk about those mitigating factors that are going to impact our budget development. Obviously, at the top of that list this year is COVID-19, um, and that really is overarching and touches a lot of things. We don't know yet exactly to what extent and how much it is going to touch those things. Um, so COVID-19 is kind of the umbrella, but then we have these things that we also look at on an annual basis or are our mitigating factors. One of those is the challenge we face in accurately projecting fluctuations in enrollment and the associated costs that goes with those. Um, and then, you know, this is kind of like a cascading effect on this side, on this slide. Um, that has to do with student needs, their social, emotional needs, needs of our special education population, our English language learners and our McKinney-Mento students, who are students in transitional housing. Um, other mitigating factors could be technology and facility needs. You know, I, I would say at this point in the discussion, that, that's a positive mitigating factor. We've done a lot of work to get ourselves positioned from a technology perspective, um, so that our students have what they need to learn, so that we have the technology infrastructure. And in this particular year, that our teachers have what they need to teach remotely when that, when that has to occur. So though we will have to continue to monitor that and make adjustments and, um, thoughtfully, carefully plan for replacement along the way, we are really well-positioned in that respect, from my perspective. And I will say the same about our facilities. We just came off a pretty significant building project where we made some significant improvements to our, um, to our building and to our facility. And you know, we will be hearing before we have to finalize our budget, uh, the, the results of the building condition survey and what we may need to plan for, not only next year, but beyond that. Um, and likewise, our progress and accomplishments in prior years, I think, position us well. We have worked really hard and, and most, if not all of you, have been part of that process as sitting board members for a period of time to look at what our students need and to create the circumstances to provide for those needs. Um, and I think about things like staffing and especially staffing tied to the social, emotional piece of our students and their needs. Um, we have been able to, while being fiscally responsive to our taxpayers, increase the positions that we have to work with students, um, kind of strategically over the last several years. So just because it's a mitigating factor, sometimes mitigating factors have a negative connotation. I think we have some things on this slide that we have done and you have done well as a board to, to well position us as we move into this uncertain, uh, budget year. So tonight is really our preliminary discussion. We will talk about the parameters that we have been using the last couple of years to guide our work and those things that really drive, in many ways, the costs that come with, with operating as a school and meeting the needs of our students. You recall from past years, those parameters will change and be updated as we go through the, the budget season. And as we learn new information or as information changes, we'll talk about some of the uncertainties, which we do every year. I think they are compounded a little bit this year. And then what we can expect moving forward in the budget process. So you should all have, and I would ask you to reference now, a copy of the parameters in your packet. Um, we did reorganize them just a little bit this year, uh, to make them, Kathy and I felt flow a little bit better. And I'm gonna ask Kathy to, um, pop in now and kind of review those with you. Again, it's the same information that you've received over the last several years, but updated to reflect this year's numbers. So Kathy, go ahead.
Thanks, Dr. Long. Um, on page one of the parameters, as you can see, the enrollment continues to increase. If you go down to our next box, you will see our special education and in-house services and homeless numbers, which they continue to fluctuate. Newly added is our high school enrollment section. In the high school projections, these numbers are tentative. We have not received our first invoice yet, which should be coming soon. Um, these numbers will be updated accordingly once they are received. Also included are the K-12 charter numbers. They also may increase or decrease throughout the year. If you turn to page two, we have our transportation and tuition figures, which we'll be speaking to in more detail on the next slide of our presentation. If you turn to page three, you will see staffing numbers, health insurance percentages, as well as projected retirement rates for ERS and TRS. If you turn to page four, our debt service payments, utility information, and newly added is our BOSIs expenditure and aid history. As a note, the current year aid is based off the prior year expenditures. Next is our current list of intermunicipal agreements. And if you go to page five, you will see our state aid his- history, which is in this year's projection, includes Bernie Donigan's building aid projection. It includes no building aid, Inc., bullet aid, and no state aid tape backs at this point. It also has our tax and budget history. And if you turn to page six, you'll see our assigned fund balance history and our reserve balances as of June 30th, 2020. And the only thing I would like to add in there, um, Kathy alluded to not including, uh, bullet aid. That is nothing we, that is something we have never counted on. We've been fortunate for many years, last year being an exception, uh, because there was no bullet aid to be had. Uh, to benefit from that, I did, uh, typically by this point, we have worked with our counterparts in our neighboring districts to set up a meeting with our elected officials to discuss our needs and concerns as a school.
to set up a meeting with our elected officials to discuss our needs and concerns as a school. Obviously, that is not something we can go and do in person this year. And I know those folks are pretty busy, too. I don't think they're too busy to talk to us. I did proactively and independent of our colleagues, our neighboring colleagues, I did reach out to both Assemblyman Steck's office and Senator Breslin's office. I did hear back from the Assemblyman that he is very doubtful that there will be any bullet aid to be had this year. I think it's, it's, though it's still an unknown on a lot of things, I think that's something we should not count on, and again, we never have. I have yet to hear back from Senator Breslin's office. But I would certainly entertain, if we wanted to try and arrange some type of a conversation with them, that we could certainly do so. So moving beyond the parameters, are those uncertainties and unknowns? And again, you're gonna see COVID-19 at the top of that list. To Bill's point earlier in the meeting, the regular meeting tonight, we don't know exactly what the long-term repercussions are going to be, and how exactly schools should or will need to operate moving forward, and the impacts that will have on that, that will have on budget development. Transportation is an uncertainty. We know we had, we were planful last year because we did have to renegotiate our transportation contracts. We knew those costs were going to increase. We budgeted accordingly. At the same time, we had a period of shutdown last year where we didn't have to fully utilize those transportation contracts. And because of the choices some of our parents are making this year, in our regular home-to-school transportation this year, we are using fewer buses than we anticipated at present. A number of our high school kids are not attending daily due to the natures of how the high schools are operating. So we are not seeing as many home-to-school, high school runs as, as we anticipated. So there could be some fiscal advantage to that. I'm not gonna say that it's not good that we're not transporting kids to school. At the same time, because of the social distancing requirements on some of our special education bus runs, as well as our McKinney-Vento bus runs, we've had to add runs to that because we can't have as many kids on the bus. So we're gonna have to continue to watch that as we go throughout the budget development process. It's an uncertainty and an unknown. It could be beneficial. It could be detrimental, but we're just gonna have to wait and monitor and watch that. Current year implications, we know from the work that we did last year during the budget process, in the situation the state government finds itself in, there was some discussion about 20% reductions in aids to school districts. We have not seen that yet, but there are still lookback periods to come. So again, we're gonna continue to need to monitor that. And I think if you kind of look at these last three bullets on this slide, these last three subbullets, they kind of connect to one another. The current year aid implications may give us some indication of aid moving forward. And I think both of those are going to be impacted by what comes from any federal stimulus or support. And I think it's fair to say, until after inauguration day, we're not gonna know anymore about that. I would suspect we won't know much by the time we come together in February, but hopefully, we will begin to have a more clear picture in March. And I'll say on all of these things, the answers may not be the answers we would ultimately hope for, but having the answers and the information is what allows us to develop a budget to work within the means that we have with the needs and wants of our kids at the forefront of our thinking. And then the last uncertainty is our high school tuition. As Kathy alluded to, we have our projections. We will get our first half of the year bill that will help us more clearly identify how close we are on those projections, the implications of any special needs of our students, and how that will play out at the end of the year. To that point, one of the reasons I asked Kathy to add those high school enrollment numbers moving forward now is because we are in one of those years where we are going to have more students going from eighth grade into the high school than we have coming out of the high school on the back end. Two years ago, we had the reverse, and it was advantageous to us because the overall cost was less. But that is a year-to-year difference, and this is definitely one of those years where we anticipate a bump based on, on current enrollments. So as we move forward, you know, I'll swing back to that first slide and my mantra that you all know me for. We will operate from what we know to be true at this moment in time. We don't know a lot definitively at this point in time. As we move forward, we will continue to update those parameters and change those numbers as we get the information. We will bring you a 21, 22 draft budget for discussion, kind of that baseline at our next meeting. If we have what we need, typically, we don't by February. We will work to bring you the tax cap calculation and any information out of the Capitol or Governor's Office. And I guess I would probably add to that line this year also, you know, at a national or federal level. So with all of that being said, I open it up to questions or discussion from members of the board.
Just, I have two, if you, I don't know what Jeff's holding up, I can't read that. Jeff, you're on mute.
Sorry, I was, I was doing an infomercial, and no one could hear me. Everybody has their budget binder, because if they don't, I know they, I have mine. Bill says he has his. Courtney, do you have yours? You do?
I have mine.
John does not. Looks like I have their own binders, and John does not.
All right, John, we will get you a new binder. And if there is anything you want from reference from prior years, let us know, and we will do our best to compile it.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Bill.
So two things. One, Dr. Long, you mentioned about possibly having conversations with Assemblyman Steck and Senator Breslin. And I understand the state's in a weird position, but our overall needs really haven't changed from what we've been advocating in the years that I've been attending those meetings, which is, I don't know, five or six. A conversation is definitely worth having, whether money's there for them to dole out or not. I think just reminding them that what we have in this community has not changed and quite possibly have gotten worse. And with that, I know our, with our county, our understanding with the, listen, I like Dan, he's a great guy, but possibly money because they're getting it directly from the federal government for our McKinney-Vento students, and we house, we educate them. Perhaps initial discussions with him directly on offsetting possibly our transportation costs or things along those lines is another conversation or something, an avenue we can travel down to, to help with our budget process.
Can I ask folks if they're not talking to me? We're getting a lot of feedback right now. And actually, to that point, Bill, and I think you have a more thing to say, but, and I neglected to mention it earlier. I want to commend Kathy for working with the Town of Colony, actually. Did just get a grant related to COVID to be able to do some things. And Kathy worked with the Town of Colony, identifying the fact that the Skyler Inn was in the town and the issues we've been having with student access to internet there. And they were able to put internet fully throughout the Skyler because of Kathy's work in conjunction with, with the Town of Colony. So thank you to Kathy. Thank you to the Town of Colony for including us and involving us and being open to that suggestion. But I have no problem penning a letter to Mr. McCoy as well.
Anybody else? I do not have anything.
We're in the early stages.
We really are. And I think we're, there's always not much to share in the early stages, but I, you know, other than at the end of the, the process last year, I feel like there's a lot of things that we don't know. No, and until we know them, we can't act on them. I mean, we will bring you a draft one budget. I'll go back to saying, no. I don't believe, other than those unknowns, we're not going to be bringing to you a heavy lift to, to add things and positions because we've worked so hard to get there, and we are, we are there now. So the work we have done in prior years, the work you have done, the support that you have given, and the community has given us, has really positioned us well moving into what could be a challenging budget year.
I would concur with Bill, though, around, even though we're not, you know, understanding the conditions and, you know, bullet aid and all that stuff, not being obviously on the table this year, it would be important for us to, in some capacity, communicate or touch base with our Assemblymen, our Senator, our Albany County Executive, et cetera, just because I, you know, we, like, like Bill said, we want to stay on the radar. We don't want to be a blip and such. We're small, sometimes we're forgotten, and we, we don't want to be that way. We want to make sure that we're at the forefront of any discussions of, of dollars and monies and advocating for our kids.
If, if the board would like me to, I can craft a communication that would go to all three of those. Be the same one or a similar one, and we could invite them to join us for a conversation, obviously, in a remote fashion or setting, to just talk about our, our kids and our school and our community, and how we would like to continue to partner with them.
Yeah, one thought, you know, if there's, you know, in the absence of the possibility of bullet aid, if there's specific pieces of legislation we could ask them to act on, that might be something to add to that conversation. So that it doesn't, you know, we're not advocating for something we know isn't gonna happen. So just a thought, I don't know. Looked through the NISBA advocacy materials recently, but certainly, there's probably something in there for us to advocate for. It would benefit our kids, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, I know that NISBA sets out stuff for us to also sign on to for letters and things that, that's constant. I mean, I probably do one of those every two months, they come out with that. And I know they'll be doing more and more of that since we're in a virtual environment in more need, in better, better in numbers.
Anything else you want me to plan for or prepare prior to the next budget workshop?
We talked about, earlier, talking about the diversity committee. And I know this is still pretty top-level and not getting into granulars, but could you talk maybe a little bit about, you know, money that might be available for professional development around that topic, and maybe that's gonna come from your CASD goals, and we're not there yet, but just, you know, keeping it in mind.
Will do. And I guess I would just, before we break for the night, again, say thank you to Kathy for all her work and efforts to put together the information for the parameters for tonight's conversation.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
She unmuted, and I think she said, "You're welcome," but I don't think we heard her.
Sorry. You're welcome.
All right, anything else before we leave for the evening?
Nope.
All right, thank you all.
Have a good evening.
Stay safe.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks.